One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the day. We thank you for your blessings. We pray, God, for wisdom. We pray for protection for our nation. We pray for guidance for our leaders in Washington, in Columbus, and here. We just pray, God, that you would give divine wisdom. And we pray for all those that have been affected by the recent decisions that are being made. We pray for those that have been cast in, out of work. We pray that you would supply them and give them their need. We pray that we would be helpful to them, that we would be faithful to pray for them and to help them in their time of need. And we pray that you would be with us today. And we ask it all in Jesus' name. And everybody sit.
Amen.
Thank you, everybody. We'll open our meeting at this time, and we need to approve some minutes, past minutes, here.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of March 12th.
And I will vacate the chair to second that motion.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
I abstain.
In the matter of approving the minutes of March 3rd, 2020?
Any questions or comments in regards to those minutes? I think, I don't think you have to abstain. I believe you need to make the motion to-
I will make the motion to approve.
Okay, I will vacate the chair to second that motion.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
I abstain.
In the matter of satisfaction of mortgage regarding the chip program?
Any questions or comments in regards to item two on the agenda? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports?
Any questions or comments from the board regarding miscellaneous reports? Hearing none.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds?
Questions or comments in regards to item four? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting an amended certificate from the Budget Commission?
Questions or comments in regards to item five? Hearing none.
Motion to accept.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of County Commissioners Association of Ohio Workers Compensation Retrospective Rating Plan Agreement with Souda County?
Questions or comments in regards to item six? Hearing none.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for fund transfers?
Questions or comments from the board in regards to item seven? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of communication from the sanitary engineer regarding customer reembolism?
Questions or comments in regards to number eight? Hearing none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Yeah.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution vacating a portion of Ohio River Road in Port of Township, Souda County, Ohio?
Are there any questions or comments from the board in regards to the vacation of a portion of Ohio River Road? Hearing none.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of current payment of the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the then-announced certificates in the total amount of $236,660.52?
Questions or comments in regards to the payments of the various funds docket then-announced and norms? Hearing none.
I make a motion to approve payments.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing Darren the Rump E.P.S. Souda County Engineer to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grant funding for installation of guardrails on various county roadways?
Questions or comments in regards to item 11? Hearing none.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. All right. Would you have anything additional, Mrs. Coleman?
This is not about the agenda, but I just would like to thank you and Mike for taking up the burden while I was gone with illness, and I want to thank everyone for their concerns and calls, and I truly appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Well, I have nothing at this moment.
All right. Okay. Thank you for everybody coming today. I think we're at our allotted ten now. So, gentlemen of the press?
How about down to nine and 11, like what they've opened the whole infrastructure, roads, bridges, the guardrails?
Nine and 11. Nine, of course, is the vacation of the portion of Ohio River Road that currently holds the Pioneer Village. We talked about that before. It's right there, out in front of Lowe's, and that was all on county right-of-way years ago. That was placed there and never had been adopted, and we were approached, county engineer was approached to do so, and that is officially adopted. That was item nine, and item 11 is a resolution authorizing the Souda County Engineer to enter into an agreement with ODOT for grant funding for installation of guardrails on various county roads. Project is transportation activity eligible to receive federal and state funding. The amount is to be determined once the grant is awarded. So, basically, gives the county engineer permission to go and seek those grants.
Does that mean there's a needed install of guardrails?
Yes, and replacement of, and, sure. Mm-hmm.
That's all right.
All right. Bill?
I don't have anything on the agenda.
We're kind of expecting off-the-agenda questions today.
Absolutely. As commissioners, I can get to the candidate, I can ask you after the meeting. So, if the media that is actually present here can get after a quote sitting at home, but what's the plan that the county has moving forward in regards to the election process? What do you anticipate happening? What kind of things you're going to have to put into motion to ensure that everybody that wants to vote gets the opportunity to vote?
That is a wonderful question. Of course, we all know that the events of yesterday threw everything into total chaos as far as the primary election. We don't have clear directives yet. We have to wait on the Board of Elections to make that clear. One of the things that I heard was they was going to do curbside voting today, but Souda County doesn't have the paper ballots to do that. That's not even possible at this moment. The only paper ballots we have would have been provisional ballots, which would have been a very small number. So, we're going to have to be patient and wait on the Board of Elections to give clear instructions on what will happen moving forward. They have a lot of work to do right now. I know that they was working late last night. You know, up until 10 o'clock, they was still putting machines out because they had been stopped. So, then they were taking machines down. I don't know what time they got done last night. I'm not really sure. We haven't had a chance to talk to them yet this morning. I think we're going to have to lean on the state of Ohio and our local Board of Elections heavily on communicating exactly where we go from here. Every vote is valuable. Every vote is, you know, by law should be, if a person wants to vote and they're registered to vote, they should be given that opportunity to vote. What that looks like right now, I'm not really sure. I don't know if we're going back into the same mode we would have been in, you know, Monday. You know, I don't know at this point, but I'm sure they'll let us know here soon, and we will communicate that to the public, as well as, I'm sure, the Board of Elections will as well.
Thank you. And I know it's kind of a tough question to ask on the fly and everything, but as a collective, not as individuals or a candidate or anything, but as a collective, because I know we've got two candidates at the table right now. Do you agree with the decision, the last decision, the Governor of Wyoming made regarding the closure of poll offices?
Speaking for myself, absolutely not. I think it was poorly planned. I think that the Governor's Office, you know, if this was going to happen, they probably knew it a lot longer or earlier than what they did it. Obviously, I don't agree with one person who's not even an elected official making a decision like they did. Currently, there's maybe 50 cases of coronavirus in a state of 12 million people, and they took it upon themselves to cancel the election for 90 days. And right now, you know, I've heard, and I don't know what all, everybody else has heard, but I've heard that, you know, this could be extended even into August. So, do we know we're going to even have an election before the general election? I think at this point, anybody that's running for anything, we don't have a clue when the election's going to be. I mean, it could go up to June 2nd, and they could cancel it again. It could go up to August, and they could cancel it again. So, what happens if it goes right on into the general election, and what's that going to look like? Personally, I think, you know, some of this has been blown out of proportion. Obviously, we don't want anybody to get the virus. It would be a potential risk, but at the same time, you know, we're all Americans, and I can tell you, American people are probably more resilient than anybody in the world, actually. And to expect people to live in a bunker for 90 days, or maybe 180 days, or even longer than that, and eat out of a paper bag when the people that's making that decision, I'm sure they've still got their kitchens open and hot meals being served, while we have children that don't get, sometimes don't know whether they're going to get a meal or eating crackers and peanut butter. I think that some things is going to have to be looked at a little stronger by the state of Ohio. And I think that, you know, they could have made better decisions. They could have made better decisions earlier on. And if, you know, if there's no intelligence or common sense up there, maybe those people need to step down and let somebody in there that has at least enough common sense to try to make decisions early on and make the right decisions. That being said, that's my opinion only, and I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to speak for the other two commissioners.
Kathy?
Well, Mike said it very well, and I agree with what Mike said. I think that the way it was handled was atrocious because, you know, they were closing restaurants and bars on Sunday. So, with that being said, I think there could have been a little more thought put into this whole idea of what might happen, and there should have been a plan. And doing these things at the last minute has, you know, these are trying times for everybody. So, with that added burden of what all the workers were doing, we hours of the night, it's just unthinkable. So, you expect your state government to be more prepared, you know, with, because it's not, it was, everyone knows, and they know very well, we were supposed to have an election today. So, with that being said, they have reasons for their decision-making, but I'm sure with everything that's going on, this will better prepare them for future decisions on things of this nature, hopefully.
I'd like to make one more remark, too, if you don't mind. What a lot of people don't realize is with, you know, the casinos and everything that's being shut down, the restaurants here locally and everything else is going to be, you know, they're going to try to survive this. But the casino cash alone will cost us about $90,000 a month in our revenue. Sales tax, we don't have a clue how much that's going to be. But we're going to lose, Souda County and a lot of rural counties is going to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars over the next three, six, or nine months, or whatever this is. And, you know, we can't survive indefinitely. The businesses here locally can't survive indefinitely, and to expect people to shut their lives down for three, six, or nine months, I think is unreasonable, to say the least, because we can't, you know, we know that we don't want to see people die from this thing, but at the same time, you know, the whole community can't run at a standstill. It just can't happen. Something's going to have to be done to get this thing under control and do it in a reasonable manner.
My statement actually covers two things. Well, one, and then I'll reserve it for a little bit later, but on, I will say this right at the beginning in regards to what Mike just said, and remind me of something. You know, we have had people take pop shots at us because we have carryover and MCO offset funds. These are the kind of emergencies that those are for. These are things that we couldn't predict, we can't predict, and thank goodness Souda County's physically healthy, and we're going to be able to weather the storm probably longer than some counties, but it's not indefinite. As far, in regards to the election, I'm very concerned about due process and what happened last night. We know that our elected officials, I'm sorry, our Board of Elections, the poll workers, the people who went out to set up machines, the people, the staff in the office were working late last night, putting those machines out, taking those machines down, in some cases, putting them back up and taking them back down, literally doing that into the darkness last night. Now, they're taking them back down today. They will later on have to put those back up and take them back down. Because of due process not being followed yesterday, there is now a unfunded mandate on the county in expense. We have to pay those poll workers. It created mass confusion on many scales. I mean, unprecedented, really. The communication that came from the state was very, very confusing. Two, three days ago, our Lieutenant Governor said that we can't stop elections now. Too many people have already voted. Hundreds of thousands of Ohioans already gone to the polls. You can't stop it. He was the former Secretary of State. Then we're told yesterday that, yes, it needs stopped, and a matter of fact, it was stated by our Governor that he needs a judge's opinion to be able to do that, but that would be what they want to do. We received notices. We started letting the public know. At that point, it went to a common police judge in Franklin County who stated that the stay was not, you know, not to have the election was not proper, stated various opinions as to why, and then at that point, the judge, I mean, basically, the judge said, no, you cannot stop the election. There's a loophole in the Higher Vice Code that says that the Director of Health of the State of Ohio, who is an unelected official appointed, okay, an appointed person can shut down elections, free elections that were set by the legislature. This all creates a constitutional crisis in our state, an unnecessary constitutional crisis that could have been averted by earlier notification or by going to the Department of Health loophole first. If you knew the loophole was there, just go to it first. Don't create a constitutional crisis by going to a judge who's going to order you not to have the election, and then announce that, well, it doesn't really matter, we're not going to have them, and then wait for a late-night ruling by the Ohio Supreme Court to tell us that, no, you're not having elections, after they announced that the elections would not take place because of a loophole. Due process, you know, in order to have confidence in your government, in order to not create panic, these are the things the government really needs to focus on. I know we're in unprecedented territory. I know that the decisions that are being made are timely, and that this thing is changing literally by the hour. We are experiencing that ourselves. Information is being pushed down on us on an hourly basis unlike anything I've seen. Lives are being affected in a major way by a lot of our citizens, if not all of them. At some point, it will. We, you know, with that said, what's done is done, and now we need to make sure that we have fair elections from this point forward, that those elections are sound, and that there's no opportunity for corruption or anything like that, because now we have a situation where an election has been delayed, which sows more doubt and fear in people's minds. We have candidates that have been disenfranchised. We have voters that have been disenfranchised. We have a situation where we need to, the state is now going to have to gain confidence, regain the confidence of the public on this. We will reciprocate and make decisions here as they are pushed down on us, but I think it could have been handled much better in the current situation. Panic is not what we need. Confusion is not what we need, and I just think it could have been done better. I really do.
So, it's accurate to say that Commissioners found out in real time as far as the events of last night?
Oh, yeah. We were here. Well, we were here until 6:00 something. We stayed, we were in the Board of Elections at 6 o'clock when they started their webinar.
She didn't make her decision about 10:00 o'clock last night?
Right. It was about 10:20, wasn't it? Something like that. And, I mean, literally, I mean, if you follow our Facebook, we were reporting in real time. We were.
We checked it four or three times last night.
They did. It changed. It literally-
It was changing hourly, and there was people from here, from our Board of Elections, that was out at the Life Center at 11 o'clock last night, I know because I was out there myself, and they were putting the machines back in there that they had taken out earlier in the afternoon, and, you know, it was a yo-yo match on, you know, what we was going to do next. But they couldn't wait the last minute, so they had to keep on moving forward as if there was going to be an election until there wasn't one, and now, you know, they've had to move those machines around several times, and that costs money, and those people deserve to be paid. Unfortunately, it's another example of how the state can cost the counties money when the counties don't have the money to spare, and we're supposed to make money out of nothing at all. Well, we're not like the federal government. We don't have a printing machine where we can just print more money and raise our debt limit. We are a county. We have to be responsible. We've been very responsible here, but right now, I don't have any faith whatsoever in our state government, and I think that they could have done things a lot different than what they did. They could have made it a lot easier on the counties. There's counties out there that are in a whole lot worse shape than we are. I don't know how much this is going to affect them, but I do know that this is going to affect us drastically on our general fund budget and our carryover money. That ain't our fault. That's those numbskulls that say it. They done everything wrong, as far as I'm concerned, and now who's going to pay? I think they should come forward with more money. They should give us, whatever we've lost, they should be responsible for.
I will also say that the legislature needs to chime in here. I'm hoping that they, the General Assembly, will have a strong statement in regards to what's been done, and I do not believe, I might be wrong on this, but I do not think that the Governor can set an election date. That's a legislative action. So, for him to say it's June 2nd, you better talk to your legislature first, and that, again, is separation of powers. So, I'm interested in seeing what the legislature has to say about this.
You may be right. He couldn't change the election date either here for Rose. They had to go to the court to do that.
Mm-hmm.
The Chief Justice Supreme Court had an interesting comment. You may have seen that, Marina Connor, yesterday. There's some courts around, some courthouses in the 88th Ohio are considering closing because of coronavirus. She says she is dead-set against that, leave the process have to continue in all 88 counties.
Yes.
And I know Marina County, down the road from us, throughout the road from us, they closed their courthouse.
Right.
And that may be where this started, I'm not sure. She had a pretty strong comment yesterday, and said, please do not close your courthouse. You have to keep going. You have to continue business. The courts have not.
This is very true. Judge Harky was at the Supreme Court earlier, well, I believe it was Monday or Friday, maybe Friday, and that statement was made very clearly. That's the last thing we want to do. Of course, we are reducing access, and the way we're doing that is we're asking people not to come. If you don't have official business, you don't need to be in this building. We have changed procedures on probationers and others to do more phone call interviews, off-site interviews. We're not, we're trying to reduce the number of people coming into this building this morning. You know, we started the process of checking temperatures. I don't know if any of you got that when you came in, but we're doing a temporal, a temperature check. You have a fever, you will be asked to leave. We cannot have exposure to the public and to workers, someone who may have the virus. So, we're starting that. We're, you know, being very careful as far as delivery drivers. We started that yesterday. We said, look, if you're ordering food in, that food will come to the security checkpoint, and we'll stop. You need to come and get it. We don't need that driver run, you know, walking around the building. We're doing those kind of things, but we have to continue to operate as a government the best we can. I know some courts are going to be revising their schedules. Some courts may choose to delay hearings for 30 days. Those are going to come from individual courts, individual judges, so keep an eye, keep an ear open for municipal court to, you know, advise what they're doing, what common police court, that is, that is kind of what, well, it is what the Supreme Court is revising right now, is for judges to choose. You know, they have the power to choose what their individual officers are going to do. That's what they're doing here. We sat in a meeting with law enforcement and the judges yesterday in regards to all of this, and they're taking measures to try to limit our jail being full. If you have delays in hearings, things like that, the jail population could rise. You know, there's dominoes here. There's all kinds of things that can happen. So, there's a lot of thought going into this. I'm proud of our local officials. I really am. I mean, we're in unprecedented territory. We are dealing with things that, who would have thought, could ever be thrust upon us, but here we are. And our local officials, our health officials, EMA, all of our elected officials, those that run the different agencies in our community are lockstep on this thing. They're doing a great job. We're doing our best to respond to what literally is coming down on us on an hourly basis, and I'm proud of, I'm proud of the response of our people. This is not easy. We're interrupting people's lives, and that is one of the worst things, one of the worst feelings you can have, you know, when you're interrupting someone's life, and it's a challenge, but as Mr. Crabtree said, Americans are very resilient, and I made the comment that this virus doesn't know who it's messed with. We will overcome. We will adapt, and in the end, we'll win. So.
Thank you very much, all, for your, for your contribution.
Oh, thank you. I have one more thing in regards to security. I don't know if you all saw the report on the judge that was shot outside of the courthouse in Mississippi yesterday. For the very reason that what happened there is the very reason why we have taken the security measures that we've taken here at the courthouse. You know, our reason for fencing in and making very difficult for an assailant to reach our judges is exactly what happened down there. A judge drove up, parked, stepped out of his truck, and a guy shot him, was waiting for him, ambushed him, and he is in critical condition today in a town, in a county the size of Souda, a little bit bigger than us. So, to say it couldn't happen here, yes, it could happen here. It's a serious situation, so we're not only protecting our judges, elected officials, but we're protecting the law enforcement. You know, ambush is always a concern, and when the law enforcement's bringing in prisoners, dropping off, picking up, that has always been a major concern of the COs, those bringing those prisoners over, that an ambush could take place, and we're doing everything we can to mitigate that, try to reduce that. And we're doing everything we can to mitigate that, try to reduce that exposure. So those that were questioning the actions of the Security Committee, this is why. And we need to be reminded that we live in a dangerous world. We like to think that we live in the Norman Rockwell world of yesterday, but that's not where we live anymore. And we have to, we have to take measures to protect people. All right? Anything else from the press? We have a visitor here today. And would you like to introduce yourself? If you have anything to say, you're free to do so.
My name is Scott Freehan. Behind us would be a producer here because I often show your eyes to me in some sort of court session.
Okay.
Sometime. And I, we need my experience. So far, I've never done this before, so it is kind of a bad way to announce. Perhaps you withdraw this agenda if you're ever going to. I haven't worked with any of them.
Yeah. Well, you're perfectly, and you're right to ask what those are, and we're here to answer. And it's Scott? You said it was Scott?
Yes.
Welcome. Appreciate that. Appreciate you being here.
What was his last name?
Okay, I'm in six and seven.
Six and seven? That's a great question. CCAO is the County Commissioners Association of Ohio. And the Workers' Compensation Group Retrospective Rating Plan Agreement, which is a lot of words in a mouthful, what that does is we actually are part of a consortium. And that consortium, by being part of that group, we get a group rating on our workers' comp. And Souda County's part of that amongst other counties. And because we're part of a group rating, we save money on our workers' comp. So that's what that is about, and that's just us saying we want to be part of that. Typically, I think, wasn't the projections around 92,000 this year or something like that, that we look to save on our workers' comp? We pay into workers' comp just in case someone gets hurt or something like that. But that's what that is. And then seven? You mentioned seven? The request for fund transfers is where departments will ask. Within their department, they have a budget, and that money is appropriated to them, okay, at the beginning of the year. And they will often move money around in order to pay bills. Say they have extra here, but they need some more over here, and they don't, maybe they're not going to need it over here so much. They'll move it around. For instance, Sewer moved, transferred, transfers from loan payments to transfers. It's Lucasville Phase Two project. That's a lot of mumbo jumbo, but they're literally just moving money around within their department to be able to pay bills out of certain buckets. Again, these were all, yeah, we had two, and they were all sewer related. And he literally was moving money around for Lucasville Phase Two project and Lucasville Phase Three project to pay bills. Okay? And we get that. We get that occasionally. Departments will do that. Okay? Anything else? I don't mean to put you on the spot. We're glad you're here today.
Where do you go to school?
Shawnee. That's wonderful. So it's a requirement of your degree?
It's a requirement of an assignment for my class.
Cool. Okay.
The legal environment business.
Okay. All right. We appreciate you being here. Well, good. And come back. Come back anytime.
See you about it.
Okay. I got you. I got you. All right. Anything else? Good? We have a motion to...
Motion to adjourn.
Are we adjourned or recessed?
What do we got coming in here? We may have to...
Make further decisions.
What's the purpose of 10:00 AM meeting?
That's...
Shane and Danielle. Oh, that's to discuss, okay. Motion to recess.
No second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.